For the dedication. Dear Father, we give you praise and glory and we thank you for who you are. We ask that you would look over us for every man and woman present here tonight. Help account as well as we the little deliberation that we have to do. Father, you know all things. You know our hearts, Lord. Help our attitudes as well. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America. In Jesus' name. One nation under God. The Spirit is God. The Lord is the God of this world. You heard at the outset, this meeting is being recorded. We are doing. Mr. Secretary, will you please perform a roll up?
Tracy Burke, here. Ed Huber, here. Matthew Danana, here. Darryl Littlefield, here. Julie London, here. Donna Rogers, here. Matthew Charlie, here. Richard Walzak, absent. And Courtney Waffle, here.
Mr. Secretary Counsel, also I will actually go on for the remainder of the month as well. The special one session, which will be next week. All right. Next up is consideration of amendments and we have three set. So we should look at the business. May I have three time of motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the February sixth, twenty twenty-three regular Borough Council.
I'll stop in.
Yeah, my counsel, Littlefield and Waffle for the February sixth regular Borough Council meeting minute. Any amendments or questions, comment? Right. On figure for approval, they say I. Any opposed? Okay, likewise for the work session.
Mr. President, I'll move to approve the minutes for February twenty, twenty twenty-three Borough Council work session.
I second. Thank you. They had motions by Counsel, Donald, seconded by Littlefield for the February twentieth Borough Council work session minute. Any necessary amendment? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, no vote. Likewise, pass it. And finally, for the special meeting that we have on the twenty-seventh.
Mr. President, making motions to pass the meeting minutes for the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, special Borough Council meeting additional use hearing.
I'll second. Yes, motion by Counselors Charlie and Danana for approval of the February twenty-seventh special Borough Council meeting conditional use hearing minute. Any adjustments? If you're not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hey, Mr. Secretary, all of those passed. And are there any? We had one presentation which we're going to postpone for the dedication of the alley. Are there any other presentations or correspondence tonight? I have nothing. Well, again, we'll move on to the mayor's board. The ministry of the place.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Last month, the meeting was too exciting, so I really have nothing to report tonight. But I will say, and since Tracy got fired, this job is announcing fire company.
I should have done that one.
So on April fifteenth, that's Saturday, April fifteenth, there's a cash bingo at the fire company to benefit the auxiliary. Uh, doors open at five P M. Early bird game start at five forty-five, twenty dollars for twenty games.
April fifteenth, David?
Yeah, packed day, so get your money.
Not so big.
Okay. Um. Word of that, I know Christina, if you're talking about some other events that are happening, I won't talk about them yet, because that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief. Uh, good evening. I sent out the police department's report earlier this afternoon. I hope you haven't seen it. Uh, long story short, February was the busiest month of that since I got here. Uh, between crashes and calls and the weather being like, uh, we had seven hundred and fifty-six victims, the ones that killed on seven dead. Um, those are not all crimes. In fact, there are, but we have to. Uh, our major crimes are actually down fourteen percent. Our minor crimes are up thirteen percent, but as are arrests, because as we're coming across these minor crimes, we're arresting people who are doing it, arresting, setting appropriate, hopefully, determine. Um, one thing that kind of changed a bit in the report that I normally give you is the call volume by hour in the day and break it up into three sections. Nightworks actually starting to get a lot busier, uh, which is a trend I hadn't seen before. We're starting to get a lot more calls, uh, over the night hours. Uh, so it's something we have to keep our eyes on, but. Um, we've been doing that. Our policies need to be best standards. Uh, we've got a couple more done over the last couple of weeks. Uh, we're just trying to get eight out of one. I've just done a roughly sort of period of time. Um, we're hoping this coming Wednesday, uh, PC, C D is having hearings on the grants that we put into last year, so we're hoping to hear something either by the end of the week or next week. They've been pretty quick about getting information out. Um. Well, our food card is going to be out for service for a bit of time, given the care. However, thanks for some work, you know, Officer Lucas and Pope's in the Red Hill Ford. And he saved us about three thousand dollars by giving a couple of warranties. So appreciate. Um, most importantly, we got rid of that smell in our garage. Uh, which is horrendous. Doesn't smell like a zombie anymore. Uh, so I have the, well, we did attach notes for you guys. Uh, and our training for the year is well underway. In fact, uh, the department's already halfway done this mandatory training for the year. It's sort of keeping it away. And all the officers, we did their first thing, and we're actually moving ahead quite well with that. That's all I have so far.
Any questions, Christine?
I have a quick question. What, in general, what types of night calls are they that you've seen trending up that has made them trend up?
So a lot more traffic stops. Unfortunately, it's a lot more domestics, a lot of alcohol related calls, and a lot of juvenile related call.
Thank you.
Physically cleaning up.
That would be, okay, I have thirty.
I was gonna bust for a chop, because I said, we, 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 but then you said, I clean that.
But we're the chopback, we're the pants. Um, I never want to smell that again. Diane Field, you're incredible enough to help me. Uh, she kept turning the hoes off and on so I could clean. The door, the shop back, me, the wall, the floor, and so we got them.
I'm sure all the officers appreciate that. Next week. All right, next week, let's watch it.
President, Counselor, as our request, we might look at. Questions from. Isn't anybody want to know what it calls?
I guess. Question, but I can know.
Small structure that is, uh, through. Personally, sure, that may create.
Right.
I don't know what this one looks like, but. So I was.
Yeah. Is that what they put the herbs in? Wow. Is that something that they need, um, from the borough or?
It's a use, I mean, it's a structure.
Yeah, because we're doing that at my church, and I was wondering.
It's a use, but my reading of zoning would require, uh, a special exception.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
I'm not. Thank you, Bob.
Yes, I.
The magic thinking.
Hey, I'm a carpenter. When there is building works on, I got a copy of the new, called the, uh, electric torch. I like to go buy more hourly, uh, that worries. Under equipment and, um, and building, we're pretty much done with the lucky, certainly we have one more to finish up. Uh, we've been studying to find out the great building, doing some demo down there, some outside, a little bit of forework today and, uh, looking down there as we need to get in there. Uh, general highway work, we had some street signs that were voted created or damaged that were replaced. Plus, uh, we had one damaged street lane sign and, uh, and another on the ring, so I had. Kind of on the chestment. Uh, that very soon, we actually did five sewer paths already this year, which shows that we did five in the last five years. But, uh, not many building lots left, so we did five sewer paths with, uh, new homes down at Second Line. And we also gave them a task for a, uh, hotfall placed on the rain garden, the inlet right there, corner of, uh, Second Line. Uh, we also had a clean out we put in up on, uh, East Dog Street. Or a property replacing their sewer. Uh, the park, uh, we started putting the, we had, you remember a couple months ago, we had sign names with the random of the paint. Uh, we started putting them up, more than up today. Uh, the cemetery, we did get the, the dog signs up during the cemetery, where all the entrance coming in. And, uh, we pared that wall and we didn't want to block to put in there. We can't find the wall, full finding that. Uh, things we're working on is, uh, we can go back and forth on the, uh, phrase building. Uh, we have Marshall five start tomorrow. We were tied up today. We're down three still. Uh, we can play a little thermal drain project on, uh, Central Avenue, something we can work at along the. The small, small dog catching some yard drains and some fun. And, uh, we'll be down the freight building, probably getting ready to start doing block. I think we're scheduled for a stakeout to come in up through the. Now, we do the drain range to put in the back, make sure we don't get any water sitting in the obvious water that's hidden behind there, like it used to sit behind me. The freight building itself, because we want to get a drain back there and no one's starting that wall down there. Um. That's about it. Uh, we do have some stuff we want to get on the sewer main on a wild avenue this year before we go to the pool. Because we think we can't be able to replace building. That's good, right? And, uh, we had, uh, we talked last month, we had the hustler went up for for sale, our, our bigger lawnmower that, that was a hundred and four inch smaller. Uh, properties were getting a little bit smaller through the building and so what, but, uh, we decided to sell that. So we did, did very well. We have the chief offered to help a little bit on his, I mean, this was a bid account. And, uh, we made nine thousand, mine key off of that. We listed it at sixty-five and grew real quick at the end, you know, up to nine. So, uh, we did have money in the budget for twelve, I think, for a minimum. Uh, so we didn't need, we do have a mower in mind that we like to purchase. I'll give a talk about it at work session, but we have three coasters, and we'll talk about that at work, but I'd like to move on to the, uh, where they're hard to find time of year when they come in and make that free trip.
Yeah.
So, your council, you got? I don't have another one. Yeah, it's, it's a coaster. It's a coaster.
It's, it's a hustler, isn't it?
It's a sky.
It's a seventy-two inch mowing deck. Uh, it was through coasters at a little better than fourteen. Uh, we had twelve in the budget, but we actually got nine back, so we're, uh, we're changing. And there's a coasters contract.
And we did have two. Have a chat down, like, drag that emotion. And we'll do, we'll do the motion a little bit later.
Okay. Can you give me a couple of details?
See, we're fly away. And there's our competitive.
Yeah, we can wait till, I mean, we have a work session the next week.
It's actually, you can wait a week. We're not gonna lose it.
Yeah, we're talking about the end of March. We don't want to go into the next calendar.
Okay.
All right, yeah, we'll, we'll present a session. That might be the work session. Five, we've got.
We just motioned that work session.
Yeah, yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait till next. Yeah, I forgot.
Never gonna, we have, uh, a truck we already have, say, from, uh, Chat Lemon, so here, here. On, uh, the next, we can make a shot of that on it. So the important thing that we have.
Any questions, Christine? Thank you for doing that. Well, I did notice that, but with Steve was referring to the cemetery wall at the rear of the, of, not the, not the wall we just fixed. Uh, right at the rear, there's a more modern retaining wall right there. So thank you. Is that why you love to come there or is that?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Or?
Yeah, we also had, there were sandblades, nice, uh, cemetery signs for the dog issues, and they, they are. One of those.
Steve, why are we got caution paper on some of the exercises?
Uh, the contractors, there's not the kind, yeah, the person that installed the play structure. They come in to take care of a few little things and found some things that needed some attention where they didn't have parts for. So, uh, the elliptical, I'm not sure why that got taped off on the kids' newspaper what they did. But there was an issue with the steering wheel on the school bus. And the slide. It's missing, it was missing from both, but they got a few more back in, so I hope it's just a fake down from that. Uh, might follow up with them. We need to kind of be aware of when they knew something about disturbance, we were never told. And some of our employees went up there with their kids this weekend. I mean, you know, people, we had no idea. So I think Mike did talk to them today.
I was just curious, not completely.
Everything's safe right now.
Yeah, everything can be used.
It confirms anything, you know?
We are missing some faults, but they're not critical to the one piece. They have to. They had, like, most in the first place. Actually, the faults were one of a hаджет. Because they were protruding out way too long, so they, they took them out.
Actually, underneath the slot, underneath the slot, the kids are still calling.
Yep.
That was.
Now that our park is being renovated, you, you notice the common hand equipment. Almost everywhere. I was down in Philadelphia the other day and saw a little pocket park that had the same type of equipment. Lots of kids there. It's been there for quite some time. I had talked to the, to our sales rep and it's holding up to the test of time, so sure as I'll do really well.
It should be used to get more final, little, we can, you know, definitely.
Any other question?
I have a quick one. I'm sure Mike or Steve, the clock tower, I've noticed, is not working correctly or on time.
What's up? It needs parts. Uh, there's, there's some stripped gears. Uh, we did send a deposit in. Repairs are a little pricey, but we did process, that was on the bill list. We did process a, uh, deposit so that we ordered the parts, but like everything else, the lead time to get those parts, it's going to be several months until they permit. So unfortunately, the clock will be reading the incorrect time.
The someone that told me until the upgrade we did, like, twelve, fifteen years ago, uh, the thing in the movie, L E D lights.
Oh, okay.
Most of the gears are all united.
Honestly, I've never looked at that clock, see what time it is. Your attention, you need to.
My stock and I'm like.
You know it's fun. I hate fun.
No.
Can we, can we, uh, like, run a contribution for that? Their name.
We, we asked one referred in, uh, in twenty nineteen. I don't think.
Anyone in the audience, a member? Okay, no. Uh, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the manager.
Okay, um. As far as the meeting schedule is concerned, I will be away the week of the twentieth, so we are going to move our work session uh, to my next Monday, uh, March thirteenth. And, uh, while I'm away the following week, I, I will not be able to access my email, so, uh, if there are any issues that council may have, please, uh, notify B Kaiser, she'll, uh, move the issue wherever it, wherever it needs. I'll be returning following. Uh, as far as the agenda is concerned for this evening, we have a appointment in the Saturday, the hearing board, representative, to appoint, uh, Brian Harringtons in the audience. Also, uh, the Park and Recs Committee did finalize the lifeguard assignment contract with banks and pool services for the twenty twenty-three summer season. Uh, that co, that contract is actually copied on your desk. The committee is recommended, uh, up in board that. We also executed the, um, police agreement for concession stand uh, for just the twenty twenty-three summer season. Concession stand is going to be run by Joe Chara. So, not exactly sure what it, what his offerings will be, but he's certainly, uh, a business man. He's definitely involved in, uh, idea pool services, so. Looking forward to seeing that when he can bring the pool with summer. Uh, pool memberships are up and available for purchase. On our website and rates did go up about five percent, but, uh, you can purchase your memberships, uh, at any time. That's everything for now.
Any questions, Mike? All right, then we'll move on to committee. You know, the committee report this evening. I know you have.
Yeah, if you want to go. Yeah, um, so last month, we're at the works, well, last month, my goodness, sorry, merged together this month. Last week, we talked, or I think it was last week, we talked about, uh, we finally have now implemented a social media policy, and I mean, talked about the rollout campaign for a Borough Facebook page, so we do now have one that's online and then we'll start posting stuff there. I know, uh, Darryl put the first post out there about pool memberships, and so we'll use that as an avenue to, to get our messaging, and if there's certain public works, things that are happening and things like that, we'll try and use that as a forum to reach out to people, because it's common these days. Yeah. We made it around social media.
So we went live.
We went live yesterday.
Yesterday, yes.
Yeah.
What did we post?
I told you. There's a post about the meeting tonight, Joe?
There's events. We're gonna create events for each meeting, so people, if they want to mark that they're interested.
How many? We have four followers?
We do. Us, well, not saying we.
You get one.
Oh, yeah.
Tell me one.
I need the mayor to share.
I bet I didn't know that goodbye, but I will.
Sarah, when we, when's the one?
Okay, that's public outreach. Any other committee?
I have one. So for the Borough Manager Search Committee, we were supposed to meet on the twenty-seventh, but due to the weather, um, the person who was coming here comes from Carbon County, and they apparently had a lot of snow. So they, um, rescheduled us for the sixteenth of March. Um, that's the Manor Center, um, and, uh, the woman's name is Nicole Beckett. She'll be coming here, meeting with myself, uh, Tracy and Donna. And Matt won't be here, but we'll report back to him and then report back to the greater part. So that's still moving.
They're still moving, they got like six or seven inches, but.
They got a lot, yeah, she's moving.
Thanks for the insight. And Mr. Vice President of Parks, would you rather say something about the benefit contract at the motion, or would you like to give a brief? The, uh, yeah, we finally got the, um, contract finalized. There was no increase in the bake price, but there was an increase in the additional hours, so if we need to use that. So we're doing, unfortunately, none of the other expenses go down, so. Sure, Ken, and everything else will be up this year. Have a, have a copy of the contract. If you have any questions for Ed, you can ask them now, or you can still reserve the right when he makes the motion. Okay, any other committee report?
This isn't under a committee, but I wanted to mention, uh, that we're going to be having a birthday cleanup on the twenty-second, uh, April from nine to one, and what we're looking to do is clean up around the building, the Borough building, over at the pool, and then on Front Street. So we'll be looking for volunteers for that birthday cleanup.
Especially children.
Sarah, will you put that on the Facebook?
I will. That's all there is.
Will it have like, um, R C P or sign up or?
It's created as an event, um, so. It can selected if the interested are going, we can get a head count.
What time did you say?
Nine to one.
Thank you. For a meeting spot, too?
Usually we meet here in front of the building, but.
And no other updates? All right, then, I'll move to public comment. If you are a resident of the Borough or property owner, uh, business owner, we'd love you to come up to the podium, state your name and address, and we'd love to hear what that. But I miss it every single week, every single one. Let me have one motion for approval of the bill.
Mr. President, I make a motion to pay the bills for the month of February twenty twenty-three, as well as pay the return bills for March twenty twenty-three. I'll second.
Two seconds.
There, there.
Okay. For the third month in a row, I have motion by Counselor Sally and Littlefield for approval of both the regular bills for the month of February twenty twenty-three, as well as the recurring bills for March twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-nine. Uh, if there are no comments. And then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go. Now, I've already made the intro for public comment, so please come and we'd love to hear what that.
Hi, Christina Kaverglis, manager of Sarcyn Connect. Um, I want to put out a reminder that this week is our first event of the twenty twenty-three season. Do You Think You Can Cook is happening this Wednesday, March eighth. Uh, from six to nine, uh, the Sarcyn Firehouse. Tickets are still on sale only through tomorrow afternoon, like free ticket sales. They're twenty dollars a ticket. If you buy a four pack, it's ten dollars off. But at the door, we will still be selling tickets. They just will be twenty-five dollars per ticket with no bundle pricing. Uh, so if you want more information about it, you can go to sarcynconnect.com. You can also see the event that has been created on Facebook. We did sell out of chef, uh, positions, so we have twenty-five chefs uh, that are not professional. They just love to cook. We have a variety of desserts or savory dishes. So come eat around the room, vote for your favorite chef. Um, we also do have free celebrity judges that will be giving out an award that you need also. We'll have a runner-up, uh, that will be chosen, and then the fan favorite will be announced on social media today after our event. Uh, if you do purchase a ticket, you'll get free voting tickets, also your admission, and then you'll get one drink ticket. So beer, wine, seltzers, and soft drinks will also be available for purchase after you've got one, uh, ticket for your favorite. Does anyone have any questions? And that's the second thing is we have opened up the swatch for third Friday. So the opportunity to be a vendor, food truck, musician, uh, that, those ones are also open on the website. So check it out. So we'll be starting on the third, uh, third Friday.
Stand by for one second. Mr. Man.
Yeah, I just wanted to go on and saying, uh, yes, this is public information at this point, and this will be Christine's last meeting with her current position. Uh, so I just want to say thank you to you and Liz. Uh, I have said this publicly that I don't think Sardar Connect would have been in a better spot than to be with my. Which means that for you, I think that the group members are more satisfied than they have ever been at this time, as part of it. So I owe my credit. A lot, a huge percentage of that positive moment. So I'll be sad to see you go, the loss of your station, the loss for Sardar, so thank you for your commitment to our.
And I always know need some gratitude. And we did have, um, one thing I didn't mention is we just had a volunteer appreciation event. Um. Couple of weeks ago, and I was able to thank. The Borough, Borough, Borough Public Works, the Borough Staff, the Police Department, our fire companies, and all of you, Chris, the Umbra, people for supporting us. And all that we do with Saracen Connect. So we truly, as much as I thank you for that, we truly couldn't have. We couldn't do what we do without the community support and all of your support. So thank you for being an amazing to work with. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're in the workshop to comment.
We'll play. East Flyfield Avenue in nineteen. At the February council meeting, I spoke during public comment to express my opinion to the end of reduction. To the library service fee and the resulting reduction in this borough's funding to the invalid public library. Council President Burke responded to my comment and his response was civil and polite, and I thank you for that. Later on, also during public comment, Health for Charlie responded to my comment. And his response was civil and polite, and I also thank you for that, Council Charlie. But fortunately, between Council President Burke's response and Council Charlie's response. Council Womple chose to respond. Council Womple responded with neither civil nor polite. Council Womple alleged that my comments were, and I quote, "dangerous to the community and dangerous to the people on this council," end quote. My primary reason for speaking tonight is to declare my strong and healthy belief that I said nothing in my public comment at the February sixth meeting. That a reasonable person would characterize the danger. Council Womple then went on to insult me personally for giving my opinion on the taxes levied by this council. Because I had not been to meetings where the taxes were discussed. I also strongly disagree with the position that a person who was not in attendance. During council discussion of an issue cannot be well informed on the issue. Minutes are posted online following each meeting. If those minutes are not sufficient to inform Sardar's residents on matters. Before and decisions made by council, then that, in my opinion, needs to be addressed. No one who comes to this podium to address council should be subjected to such an angry, hostile, and disrespectful response. By a member of this council. Especially by the member of council that gave the prayer of invocation at the beginning of that February meeting. Council Womple, I suggest that you view the recording of your invitation and then fast forward to your response to my comment. And then reflect on how you represented yourself and this council. Now, if you weren't at the February sixth meeting, and your only knowledge of Council Womple's response is your reading of the minutes of that meeting, you might be wondering what's going on. Frankly, I get it. If I had spoken in that way in this council chamber, I wouldn't want it to be a part of the record item. I reviewed the minutes that you all approved earlier this afternoon. Counselor Womple's response to my comments is given as a statement about the media presenting a false narrative. Nothing of what I described and what I was subjecting to. The public record of the meeting needs to be accurate. I respectfully request that the minutes of the February sixth meeting be updated to include a verbatim transcription of Council Womple's response. I believe the people of Ward Three, if not Sardar Team. Are entitled to know the type of person that has been elected to this council. I would be happy to provide that verbatim transcription. Thank you.
There's nothing that I can say about that's going to. Change Mr. Pike's opinion about me, so I'm not going to justify anything with any kind of response. So I'll just let what I said at the February sixth meeting and how I said it speak for itself.
Are you willing to have the minutes updated to include what you're what you stated that that means rather than what's in there now?
Mike, I will personally look at that section of the minutes and consult with the Borough Manager, okay?
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, there are none. The the public comment section of the evening is closed, and I'll move forward to the business of the. Evening. I would say we almost had a record, but we're going to be close. Uh, we have two motions uh this evening, so the first. Is for a appointment uh to put the unexpired term of being lawyer of Mr. Brian Harrington. And. Brian, uh. I know you and, but I think it might be good for council. Would you mind coming up and and saying hello to everyone?
Hi, good.
Say a little bit about yourself, and guess what? I was just in Fort Bragg. I was.
Um, Brian Harrington, uh, I've been in Sardar in for sixteen thousand years now. Actually, with my wife. So been a resident of the borough, love living here. Uh, but that hurts. I served in the army back in ninety one five. Um, I don't think I just started my business actually, uh, home services company based in Sardar, and I own several. We own several, several properties in the area. Um, and, you know, I'm just really looking forward to giving a little bit back to the community. I love Sardar, and I'm a great town. Uh, kind of super, I think, very popular. And I saw this, Darryl reached out to me and said, there's this great opening, and I saw the way that I can give back, although I've given up so much, so. I look forward to serving everyone, but nominated for the mission, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your interest. Thanks, Brian. Hey there. May I have a motion for that unexpired term?
Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint Brian B. Harrington, one fifty three Eighth Street, Sardar. To fill the unexpired term of Eugene lawyer through December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
I'll second. Okay, I have motion by Council Littlefield and Rogers to appoint Brian B. Harrington of one hundred and fifty three Eighth Street of Sardar to fill the unexpired term of Eugene lawyer. Through December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
Mr. President, just to clarify, uh, the appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Eugene lawyer, which will be at the end of this year. This is typically a three-year term, so uh we would then be reconsidering. His appointment again at the end of the year for two, three-year term.
So you get a trial period, but I hope that you would you would love to stay on to that, I would agree. Mr. President. There is no trial period.
Nine, nine years.
May I have an amendment, counselor, to the motion that this will be a lifetime? Brian, seriously, though, when your name came up, um, everyone, they're excited. In your reputation, speaking. Thank you. Okay, then, hearing no further comment. All in favor of this great motion to appoint Brian B. Harrington, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That is now, and I am E B. For defending from pool services contract. So Ed oriented us a little bit to that.
Yes, Mr. President. I make a motion to approve the lifeguard ninety year contract with spending some pool services for the twenty twenty three summer season.
I'll second. Never heard Stone say that. Okay, I have motion by Council Huber. And then to approve the lifeguard management contract with Benny's Pool Services for the twenty twenty three summer season. Are there any additional questions, comments, or concerns regarding that contract?
I just want to thank the committee. They did an awesome job, and uh I would have one at the meeting where we address some of the past issues, and. I'm looking forward to this summer, where Benny can address some of the trial period and issues that we've had. Uh, so thank you for me and and that. That's a lot of work, and it's probably our biggest contract in the borough. It's out.
Absolutely.
Sarah, I think you're not memoing about the pool, right?
It is, yes. If you want to provide a quote, that would. I'll talk to you about. Yeah, the next one.
Oh, no, I I just meant so the public knows more information about like upcoming changes, never think it's coming. Um, for the season.
Yep, that'll go out uh April first.
Some of the things that we've been working on with setting things trying. Have more accountability on some of the issues we had last year, so hopefully it'll be a smooth season.
I would like to underscore the mayor's comments, uh, the amount of work that you guys did. I mean, I I've seen all the emails, and it was a tough negotiation. It was. Tough establishing that accountability that Council Womple uh alluded to. Um, Ed and I talked about it virtually every week for the last six months, and, you know, kept always getting the feeling that we're just a day late and an hour short, but we are. Uh. A lot quicker on the uptake this year, so we're we'll be in a good position. We're also going to hire probably some uh eight staff that will be under the borough's leadership. Uh, so I'm just looking forward to look at policy, and if that's really getting us to the point right now. Did you have a comment?
No, those are, um, they're posting now, right? Those positions?
Yes. Have we had interest?
Uh, we have one. One person that came forward, but we certainly have opportunities, so uh. You know, for summer help, or even thinking potential internship in position, if somebody has an internship. And maybe even somebody that does have aspirations to be a pool manager could could maybe look at. And joining us. So, yes, that is that is posted up in a number of different places. We are still looking for.
Any other comments? All right, then. All in favor of approving the lifeguard management contract with Benny for the twenty twenty three summer season, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Any other business for the evening? I may have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, motion to adjourn.
In the library.